Good evening, I'd like to call to order the November 17th, 2015 Seminole County Public Schools School Board meeting. At this point in time, I'd like to turn the agenda over to our very special invoker, a gentleman who will be leading us in the pledge, and Dr. Dillinger will introduce this fine young man.
Board members, I'd just like to introduce Mr. Claude Archie, the Assistant Principal at Pinecrest Middle School. He's going to tell you a little bit about 5th grader Michael Finelli.
Let me tell you about my student, Michael Finelli. Michael Finelli exemplifies the true meaning of what Pinecrest Panther Spirit embodies. Michael is currently a 5th grader at Pinecrest and has taken on the role of a positive mentor for his peers. As a member of the Elite Safety Patrol, Michael's responsibility every day is to make sure that our nation's colors are raised and lowered respectfully. Michael also ensures that stray kindergarteners find their way to their destinations, whether it's to the cafeteria or their school bus. Michael helps his classmates with homework and works with computer software such as Minecraft. He assists his PE coach with class setup before the day begins, and he always has a smile on his face. Michael's mother, who is at work this evening adds, "At home, Michael is a good citizen, a very smart boy, and very responsible. Michael is a very good helper around the house, and also a good helper when it comes to his baby sister." Michael loves video games, sports, swimming, and watching movies. He wants to be a PE coach when he grows up. Michael loves to help everyone, and that makes him a good citizen and a true Pinecrest Panther.
Thank you, Mr. Archie.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michael. Excellent job. And I was at Pinecrest today, and there weren't any stray kindergarteners, and I'm sure it's due to your leadership. Let the record reflect that all School Board members are in attendance in addition to our legal counsel and superintendent. I'd also like to acknowledge our Business Advisory Board member Byron Walden, who's in attendance for this evening. Thank you, Byron, for your leadership and for being here this evening. Dr. Griffin, do we have any agenda modifications?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. The addendum for good cause is marked on Electronic Agenda by a green flag named addendum item. Also, I have three items I will be pulling this evening. Item 3A are focused on student achievement. Item 4P, E-Rate Consulting Services. And item 11A, Community Leadership Academy.
What was the middle one again?
4P, E-Rate Consulting Services.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. Board members, do we have any questions or clarifying items that you would like to bring forth at this time? First, Vice Chairman Lockhart.
None, thank you.
Member Almond.
No modifications, thank you.
Member Schaffner.
Just a comment on 4S, as in Sam.
Member Bauer.
None, thank you.
And I don't have any as well. So at this point in time, Dr. Griffin, do you have a suggestion for approval of the agenda outline?
Yes, I recommend that the agenda outline be approved as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations for this evening?
Yes, we do. Please join me up front.
Good evening. Chairman Calderon, Dr. Griffin, I'm pleased to be here today to recognize students and teachers on behalf of the STEM Alliance. The STEM Alliance is an organization committed to collaboration between the business community and our public school systems. It's their belief that unified efforts are essential to capitalizing on the business community's needs for continuous improvement in STEM education if we are to achieve our goal of having a well-prepared workforce. With this objective in mind, the STEM Alliance and the Central Florida School Boards Coalition designed the STEM Alliance Student Scholars Program. It is designed to serve as an incentive for students to be more successful in STEM courses and to take more advanced STEM courses throughout their middle and high school years. Middle and high school students in Seminole County were asked to submit names of outstanding and most improved students in their schools. The district is allowed to submit 24 names between grades 7 through 12. The STEM Alliance also allows the recognition of two STEM teachers for their continued efforts in building interest and capacity for students in these fields. This year, Seminole County will recognize an elementary math teacher and secondary science teacher. With us tonight to help recognize these students and teachers, standing up in our receiving line next to Mr. Bauer, is Darrell Holt, a STEM Alliance Board Member from EA Studios. Mr. Holt is Vice President and Group COO with EA Studios and is responsible for managing EA Sports in Florida and Texas operations. You may have seen Mr. Holt this past weekend when he was featured in the Orlando Sentinel promoting Math for Madden program. Standing next to Mr. Holt is Mr. Stan Palmer, the teacher on assignment to promote STEM and robotics for the school district. At this time, we'll begin with the student recognitions. I know we have several teachers and administrators in the audience tonight as well, so if we announce one of your students, please stand to be recognized as your students come forward. From Wicklow Elementary, Sylvia Alvarez-Migalas. Sylvia's teacher from Wicklow Elementary for mathematics. Hilson from Lake Brantley High School also has received this recognition, and so if we can give her a round of applause in her absence for her excellent work. And now to go through the student recognitions, beginning first with Indian Trails Middle And we have a few more students who weren't able to get checked in. I want to call their names in case they were able to make it in the audience, and we just didn't catch them on their way in. From Milwi Middle School Azariah Smith. From Croons Academy Max Porman. From Seminole High School Andrew Delgario. And from Seminole High School Olivia Zhang. And not able to attend tonight was Sam Lee and Jimmy Ken from Seminole High School. One more round of applause, please, for all of our students. Hold on, I think I have one more student who is here, from Lake Mary High School, R.G. Tipper-Nane. Great job to all of our hard-working students and teachers. Thank you very much for your attendance. And at this time, I want to turn it over to Ms. Minnie Cardona, our Director of ESOL World Languages, who also has a few STEM awards to recognize.
Good evening, everyone. At this time, first, I would like to recognize a guest we have among us from the Embassy of Spain, from Tallahassee, that came up to recognize our teacher that just won the STEM Award, Phyllis Gaspar. Thank you for joining us, and congratulations to Sylvia, too. Well, we continue with the STEM theme, but now I'm going to add an A to it, and it's going to be our STEAM Awards. Tonight, we would like to recognize three outstanding students that represented Seminole County Public Schools at the Latism Conference in Washington, DC on October 28th and 29th. The Latism Conference brought students from all over the country to present their state of the art in science, technology, engineering, art, and math, STEAM. This organization is committed to bringing exposure to STEAM careers to young Hispanic students. The presenters at the conference share best practices on how to use technology, innovation, and social media that can empower our community and schools. Three of our students were selected among 250 students throughout the nation to present their projects. Our students presented their projects to a panel of judges at the White House with government leaders, and also at the conference itself. At the conference, our three students were interviewed by top Latino tech founders such as Google, Toyota, Consumer Reports, Walt Disney, Johnson &amp; Johnson, just to name, among other, business partners that were out there. The three students we would like to recognize tonight, and please, parents, stand when I call your child's name, and the administrators, we have Julian Martinez again from Milwi Julian is an 8th grader from Milwi. He is taking pre-IB classes. His science project was about generating electricity from bioreactor using mud and determining the ideal temperature for storing the bioreactors. He did an amazing job. Congratulations, Julian, and I would like to recognize his parents, too. Could you please stand? Family members, please stand. And our wonderful principal, too, from Milwi, could you stand, too? There you go. Thank you. Our next student is Luis Reyes. Luis Reyes is a senior from Winter Springs High School. Luis, you could come on up. He is currently taking 3AP classes and honors classes. He has a current GPA of 4.035. Luis is a member of the Science Honor Society and competes in Cyber Patriots, a national cybersecurity competition hosted by the Air Force Association. His project was a presentation on cybersecurity, what it is and how important it is in today's era. His goal is to raise awareness about this topic, as most people are not aware of what happens behind the curtain in the world of cybersecurity. Luis is accompanied tonight by his mom. Is she here, Mrs. Martinez? Oh, congratulations. And our next student from Croons Academy of Information, Danielle Siciliano. Danielle Siciliano-Garcia, come on up. Danielle is currently taking honors and dual enrollment courses. Now, Danielle's project, all of them were amazing, and I don't even want to go into the details, but I'll just give you the highlights. His project was the development of a filter cable filtering out bacteria, viruses, and toxins out of water. Very interesting. You guys could talk to him, he could give you the details on that one. I just want to congratulate again all three students. They did an outstanding job representing Seminole County at the Latism Conference. Thank you. And at this time, I would like to introduce our Executive Director for the Foundation, Tatia Moss. Thank you.
Good evening. We have some special friends of Seminole County Public Schools that we'd love to recognize this evening. These leaders served on the Board for the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools going back as early as 1989, and have recently completed their term as Board Members. Yes, they were "we" children when they started on the Board. I'd like to introduce each of them to you as they come up to the front to be recognized. The first who couldn't be here with us this evening is Chris Brown, serving from 2009 to 2015. Chris wanted to share his biggest accomplishment, he feels, with the Foundation, is getting to know so many truly great individuals that inspire him daily. But what we loved about him is the fact that he really launched our Golf for Education Tournament, and it increased in its fundraising capabilities year over year. We loved having him, and we appreciate his term with us. The next one is Gerald Demers. Come on down, Gerald, serving from 2007 to 2015. Gerald originally got involved as a volunteer assembling backpacks, then served as a mentor, and within three months became a Board Member. He continued on the Take Stock Committee, the Golf Tournament Committee, and watched a Gift for Teaching Seminole launch. Gerald has truly enjoyed the hard work, laughter, and connection with others while helping so many children over the years. We thank you, Gerald Demers. Next up, Barry Gaynor, serving from 2008 through 2015. Barry served as School Board Member for Seminole. He also joined the Foundation Board in 2008, serving as a volunteer for Take Stock in Children. He served on the Finance Committee and served on the Executive Committee as the VP of Governance, overseeing critical bylaws revisions back in 2013. That was a great project. He has also been instrumental in bringing funding from Rotary Clubs to support this Take Stock in Children program, and Barry and his wife Lynn make a difference as tireless advocates for children, and we thank him. Andrea Herr couldn't be with us tonight, but she's served. Oh, is she here? Oh, right! Andrea, come on down. Andrea served from 1989 to 2015, and we've decided that she started when she really was a baby. So since joining the Board, Andrea and the businesses she represented have been very generously supported students, as well as employees of the school district. She served as Chair and Co-Chair of Arts Alive over several years, and she and Nancy McCarthy were credited for bringing Arts Alive event to a new level of success. She served as past Chairman, as well as on Executive Committee over numerous years, and most recently, her firm Highland was a major donor to On Our Way to an A. That's a program that includes reading mentorship for the lowest-performing elementary students on the standardized test in reading. Andrea Herr, known for her making a difference in the welfare of children. We thank you. Okay, I don't think Sandy Hughes is here tonight. Okay. Sandy Hughes served from 2006 to 2015. She served on the Executive Committee for numerous years in roles to include Secretary and Treasurer. She has served as a volunteer or committee member for almost every program of the Foundation, most recently as Chair of a Gift for Teaching Seminole, where the program experienced a record year of distributing $1.8 million in school supplies to the area's schools in the county. With all her talents and accomplishments, her fellow Board Members say she's most known for driving a mean margarita cart at the Golf for Education Tournament each year. We thank Sandy Hughes. Next up, Nancy McCarthy, serving from 2000 to 2015. Come on down, Nancy. Nancy served as Chair and Co-Chair of Arts Alive over several years. She and Andrea were credited for bringing that event to a new level of success. She and Andrea were credited for bringing that event to a new level of success, and she has served as past Chairman, as well as on the Executive Committee over numerous years. She and her family's artistic talents have brought originality and distinction to our events, and she can usually be found in a beautiful gown bidding high in the live auction with her husband Kevin at Arts Alive. Thank you, Nancy McCarthy. Next up, Jerry Marino. Jerry Marino served from 1998 to 2015. Jerry "The Rock" Marino can be counted on every year to support both of our major fundraising events, Arts Alive and the Golf for Education Tournament. He leverages his extensive network in the community. Everybody knows Jerry, and he brings in donations and in-kind support for the Foundation. He's a major donor as a member of the Superintendent Circle, and no matter what you ask for, Jerry can be counted on to lend a hand with a smile on his face and a spring in his step. Thank you, Jerry. Sandy Robinson couldn't be here this evening. She served as a School Board Member from 1990 to 2010. She served on the School Board when they birthed the idea of Arts Alive, now in its 20th year, or 19th year. She and her husband Gary have never missed a performance. She was involved in approving the Take Stock in Children, Families in Transition, and a Gift for Teaching programs as well, and we are fortunate to have Sandy continue to serve as a volunteer for Arts Alive and a Gift for Teaching Seminole, which is her true love. She shares it's so rewarding to see smiles on the teachers' faces as they find just what they need for their classrooms or a student in need. Thank you, Sandy Robinson. Next up, Richard Sloan. Richard originally participated in the consolidation of U.S. Chambers Scholarship Foundation and the Foundation for Seminole County Public Schools into a single support organization for the school district. He brought support of UCF to the Foundation activities over the years, to include Arts Alive, Teacher of the Year, and other Foundation-supported events. He wants to share a funny story. We love this one. As a committee member of a Gift for Teaching, he recalls a passful of foreign currency that had been received through the Foundation's collection boxes at the Orlando-Sanford Airport. Among the collection, they discovered five very fresh-looking Greek banknotes, each in the denomination of 250,000 drachmas. Some among the group thought they had inherited a fortune for the Foundation, since a single drachma at that time was worth about 50 cents US. Upon further investigation, they discovered that despite the banknotes looking very new, Greece had devalued its currency, and a short time before, the notes were worthless. So, other currency and coins in the collection brought in about $12 when exchanged at a coin show. Viva la Greece. Thank you for the story, Richard. We want to thank our retired Foundation Board Members. You will forever be special friends to Seminole County Public Schools, who do not be strangers. Thank you.
I'd like to ask the members of the St. Mary Magdalene Council of Catholic Women to please come forward. Adriana Russo, Eleanor Johnson, Barbara Falkingham, Miriam Velo, Sue Bass, Lois Loce, and also a member, Board Member Karen Allman. This organization, the Council of Catholic Women, is a nationwide organization. It was founded in the 1920s to help women have a voice in society and develop their leadership skills. The St. Mary Magdalene Council of Catholic Women has about 150 dedicated members who contribute to the many different projects in our local community and throughout the world. Their newest program, Heart Strings and Shoe Strings, was founded by this group, this council, two years ago for the purpose of helping children in need by supplying them with new shoes. They are a nonprofit organization, and 100% of their income from fundraisers go directly to their programs. Last year, they donated shoes to students at Lake Oriental Elementary, Hamilton Elementary, Castleberry Elementary, Spring Lake Elementary, and Teague Middle. They are currently planning a donation this coming Friday to students at Pinecrest Elementary. Their mission is to motivate, assist, empower, and educate women and children in our community, and hopefully help them lead better lives. Thank you to the St. Mary Magdalene Catholic Council of Women for all that they do to support Seminole County Public Schools. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to introduce a new Administrator, Teresa Thacker. Please come forward. Teresa is the new Assistant Principal at Sterling Park Elementary. Teresa has been an ESE teacher for eight years in Texas. She was an Administrator at the District Office in Rockwall, Texas. She served as an Intervention Specialist and Coordinator of 504 and Response to Intervention Team. She also served as an Inclusion Specialist and Support Team Specialist for Seminole County Public School. She received her bachelor's, master's, and doctorate degree from Texas A&amp;M Commerce. Family members in attendance with her tonight could not be here, but on behalf of Sterling Park, we welcome you. And is anyone here from Sterling Park Elementary? Mrs. Dillard? Thank you. Kelly?
Good evening, Board Members. I would also like to introduce a new Administrator to you, Ms. Sarah Borowski. Sarah has become an Administrator as a facilitator of the Assessment and Accountability Department. Sarah possesses a bachelor's degrees in communications and journalism, master's in business administration degree with emphasis in finance and marketing, a master's of science degree in educational media design and technology, and soon to be completed a specialist degree in educational leadership. Prior to joining Assessment and Accountability, Sarah was at Lakeview High School for 10 years, where she served in various leadership capacities, including ETF, media specialist, testing coordinator, English reading, math, and science teacher, yearbook advisor, and department chair of the English Language Arts and Career Tech Ed Departments. Here to recognize Sarah and her family members, if they would please stand, Ms. Nancy Keck, her mother, who's also a teacher at Greenwood Lakes Middle School. Her aunt, Mary Lynn Gerhart, who is a teacher at Lakeview High School. Her brother-in-law, John Reynolds, who's a teacher at All Souls Catholic School. Her niece, Eliza Reynolds. Also joining Sarah tonight is Ms. Toni Norton, Assistant Principal at Lakeview High School, who has been Sarah's advisor and mentor, and also some members of the Assessment Accountability Team. Thank you.
I'm so sorry so many had to leave after all that, because we have a great agenda upon us. That being said, Board Members, there is an item that I would like to pull for additional comment, if it pleases the Board. Number 4X, if I would at this time entertain a motion, and X as an X-ray?
So moved.
I had pulled it first. I didn't pull it, but I just had a comment.
That's what I just, I'm asking for an agenda modification.
Oh, X, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
X as an X-ray?
Gotcha.
For comment. And at this time, I'll entertain a motion for Ms. Lockhart.
I'll do second.
If there's second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much, Board Members, for your support. The first item, Ms. Schaffner, you had a comment or question on 4S, please?
Yes. Hold on, just a minute, let me pull it up. It was regarding the language labs, the Renaissance Language Labs, and a couple of us were at Sanford Middle last week.
Yes.
And actually saw those labs in action, and it is an incredible opportunity. Walked in, the room was totally silent. All the kids had on headphones, and this was a Spanish class, and it was very, very impressive to see those kids. They were speaking into a little microphone, and we talked to the teacher, and she said, ordinarily, they wouldn't speak up, because in middle school, you don't want to make a mistake, because you're afraid everybody will laugh at you, but they will do it with this language lab. It's very, very impressive, and I just wanted to make a comment on it, because I see that we are buying another one here, so I just want to make a comment on it.
Thank you so very much. It is exciting to see the excitement in the students and teachers in those classrooms. And I asked for 4X to be pulled, because I know, Board Members, as you know, we spent quite a long Board meeting, at our last Board meeting, talking about the Student Progression Plan, and had a lot of public comment, as I know we have had many emails and phone conversations, but I thought it would behoove us, if perhaps, Dr. Griffin, if you could take a moment and summarize this for those of us, perhaps, who haven't been so closely tied to it.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. First and foremost, tonight, what I'm going to be asking for is preliminary approval of the proposed revisions. We'll be bringing this back December 21st for final approval, like as to public an opportunity to comment on our revisions. I would like to specifically address the changes to middle school, because that's where we've had some questions, asked some comments, and I see a few parents here, and would really appreciate their input over the past couple of weeks. First, and this is embedded throughout the document, first recommendation is going to be that high school honor courses taken in middle school be weighted exactly the same as they are in high school. So when a student takes an honors Algebra I course, for example, and say they make an A, instead of receiving just a 4.0, it would be weighted 4.5, exactly the way that we do it in high school. And I do want to say, because I had a few parents who had this question, it's a great question, our previous practice of not weighting the courses in middle school, did that negatively impact the students in high school? And the answer is no, because once they matriculated to high school, and that became part of the high school course history, it was automatically weighted, so it's attached to it. So I like this, because then we're treating middle school, really the ultimate GPA in middle school, exactly the way that we are treating high school. So I think it's an opportunity. I also think it will encourage more students to take honors classes in middle school, and of course, I'm just referring to the high school honor courses. The other part that Board has to be aware is what will happen, and this is also indicated in the Student Progression Plan, for the first time, we'll have middle school students who can potentially earn greater than a 4.0 GPA. Remember from National America the other night, we had 4.9.
4.9.
We had a 4.9, still can't figure that one out, 4.9. But we will have students who have greater than a 4.0, which, again, I think that's what we do in high school. I think it's good for the middle school students to start thinking like that. The second piece that we've addressed, really are the nine-week exams for middle school courses. The first nine weeks, they counted 20% of a student's grade, and we've gone through the exams. The exams are very rigorous. It's quite a change, especially for a student coming from elementary school, moving into that arena, and my recommendation is going to be that for middle school courses, we drop that to 10%. And I think that that's fair in terms of the minimal impact it will have on students' grades, yet it will still give us a common denominator to get our students prepared, especially for high school work, and just making sure that the rigor and that we're meeting the standards that the students have to learn. So we're going to drop that to 10%. But I want to be clear, that's for middle school classes. High school classes will be treated exactly the way high school classes are treated.
It's going to be 20%?
That's correct. And then probably the biggest change in the things, the piece that we have been dealing with, and middle school principals, I see you out there, where are our middle school principals? Okay? Thank you. I know I've driven you crazy over the past three weeks. They're tired of seeing me. But we had to really land at a place, and I think a few factors drove my recommendation. First and foremost, always, is being fair and transparent, but also having a system that everybody understands, the parents, but especially the students. And I think the conversion chart that we were using caused some confusion. And so my recommendation for grading is going to be that we go back to the way that it was last year, which is aligned to high school, and the three choices that teachers would have, and this is not spelt out exactly in the Student Progression, we don't tell teachers how to grade, but we have to set up Skyward, so we're going to set it up just the way that we have had it set up last year, and as we do in high school, is that teachers could grade on a percentage basis, and the percentage that we're all used to, a 90 to 100 is an A, 80 to 89 is a B, and so on. Or they could use an A, B, C, D, F system, and it would not be utilized in the conversion chart, but it would be a whole number, 4, 3, 2, 1, 0, attached to that, or using total points, where they calculate a percentage off of that. And speaking to teachers, really convinced me that one size does not necessarily fit all, and a quick example would be, you know, maybe an art teacher wants to grade A, B, C, D, F, but probably the algebra teacher doesn't. So I think that our teachers, treating them professionally and giving them the choice of how to assess their students, my main concern is that the students are mastering the goals and the benchmarks, and are prepared for the next grade, and certainly for the next level of their education. But I think that this will, I think the choice will help the teachers. Teachers told me that in inputting the conversion numbers, it was very, very time-consuming, because they would grade a test, have, just say, a percentage, had to look at a chart to put in a, you know, maybe a 3.16, or whatever, and I think this will be a time saver. We need to be putting our energy towards planning our lessons, delivering instruction, and teaching students. So I think that this is, that these choices and these recommendations will go a long way in us being more transparent, so our parents, but especially so our students, understand exactly how the grades are going to go.
Thank you for that clarification, Dr. Griffin. So with all the questions being answered and comments being heard, at this point in time, I'll entertain your Superintendent's recommendation on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Student discipline hearing dispositions. Dr. Griffin?
Yes, that the School Board of Seminole County approved the student disciplinary recommendations from October 19th, 2015, and November 2nd, 2015.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to Board Member Committee comments. Vice Chairman Lockhart, did you have the opportunity to attend any committees?
I did.
On behalf of the Board?
I did. We had the Insurance Committee meeting this week, yesterday. Andrea Herr still here?
No.
She was a rock star at that meeting. She did a fantastic job, I think, really listening to some of the questions that were asked, and helping to clarify people's questions and concerns, and she's just an invaluable member of that team. So shout out to Andrea, if you're listening. Someone tell her I said she did a great job. Katie Murphy's back there nodding her head. Yes, she really did. I think we had Dr. Griffin came and visited for a few minutes, and the committee was able to give him their recommendation for the wellness recommendations, that this upcoming year, the incentives remain the same, but for the following year, for what would be Plan Year 18, that we could look at perhaps changing those to something else, and we're working with Cigna regularly. I think the big piece that I took away was that we need to bump up our schedule and start making decisions much sooner. In the world of insurance timelines, what might seem reasonable to do in '27 for 2018 really is not. We really need to be looking at 2018 and 2016. It's just, that's where we're at. So we'll be probably talking April, May, before the end of school, to make a decision about what we want the wellness incentives to be for Plan Year 2018, so that before our employees leave for school this summer, they'll know an additional year in advance what it is, where we'll be headed. So I think that's, and Katie, if I'm, okay. Katie's our secretary, so if I ever say any, if I mischaracterize, she'll give me the... It was great. It was a great meeting.
Good. Thank you so much. Member Allman?
I did not have any committee meetings in between our last meeting.
Okay. And Member Schaffner?
Yes, the BAB met last week. We had a presentation from the virtual school. Very, very interesting. I think we all learned a great deal from that. I think they had a lot of questions, and it was a great presentation. So that committee continues to function, and they're a huge help to us.
Great, thank you. Member Bauer?
Yeah, the only thing I had was the Computer Science Task Force. We had our final meeting. And Jason, when will we be presenting our plan to the Board? Before the end of the year or after? Just depends.
I hope before.
Okay. We'll be coming- Okay. We'll be coming forward. And this is basically our plan to integrate technology into every class, or every grade level by 2020.
Fantastic. Thank you. And the only committee I represent this board on that met was the Central Florida Public School Boards Coalition. And as you know, this month, our meeting was our state mandated ethics training. So there's nothing new to report there. The ethics training is the same as it has been the past few years, but I was grateful that Orange County allowed us to use their facility and their attorneys to give us that training from a different angle than we're used to getting at FSBA. It's the more fiscally responsible way to deliver the instruction as well. So thank you for those who attended. And at this point in time, it is now our public comments section on our agenda. And Vice Chairman Lockhart, if you could share with our audience?
Comment forms are on the back table for anyone. I think the, if you haven't filled them out yet and would like to, you can bring them up to Ms. Meremis, our clerk. The public input segment of the meeting is provided to allow the public to present specific matters to the school board for consideration and referral to the superintendent and staff for inquiry and action, or address specific items on the agenda. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates or others, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. It is not the intent of the school board to deprive anyone of his or her right of freedom of expression. It is, however, the intent of the board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of members of the public appearing before the board. The school board expects positive communication and will not permit disruptive, volatile, hostile, or aggressive communication on the part of speakers. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker's sign-up form. Comments shall be directed only to the board and may not address the audience. Speakers that do not comply with this direction will be asked to leave the lectern. And if you would, please state your name and address for the record prior to speaking.
Thank you so very much. The first person I'd like to call to the podium, please, is Mr. Dan Smith. And then Eric Oberson will be next.
I trust mine better. Don't mind.
Sorry.
All right. Time's not running yet.
Good evening. My name is Dan Smith, and I am a teacher in Seminole County Public Schools. I'm also a resident, and my children had gone to school here. I want to speak on some concerns I have about the adoption of the 2016-17 calendar. Seminole County Schools has been unique in the last at least 10 years since I've lived here. And the fact that they have chosen to close an observation for the Jewish holidays, specifically Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, and next year, you've chosen to hold session and be open. I'm not asking to reconsider that decision or anything. And I, in fact, I certainly understand, it's a very small percentage of Jewish students and staff in Seminole County Schools, and I suspect the cost factors certainly weigh in favor of, of remaining open. And I understand that. But I am concerned about the following three things I'd like to ask about. The decision to end quarter one on Wednesday, October 12th, which is the remaining day of Yom Kippur, without explanation, in a superficial way, is very, seems very insensitive. That's the last day of the quarter, and you've chosen to close the two days afterwards. We're opening August 10th, which is a Wednesday, a little tweaking, I'm just saying, we could have started August 9th and been closed that day. It just, it would have made a difference to the people that it affects. My other concern is that while excusing our students from school that day, you're forcing them to choose between academics and their faith. And that's a very difficult decision to put on young people. In the secondary schools, we've got, you know, very competitive GPAs, we've got AP courses, and there are going to be students who are going to weigh the factors and, and choose to not observe in order to, to attend school. And I just think that's kind of an unfair burden to put on our young people. My final concern is I think there needs to be a uniform policy on, excuse me, excusing the students. I've had calls from parents, I live in the community, and I've heard that they have been told they need to bring in tickets, that they had, to prove they've gone to services, letters from the temple, or even notes identifying their kids. And I don't think it was the intent or any malice by the school board of the schools, but I, I find it historically insensitive to ask Jewish students to carry papers identifying them as Jewish. I'll ask you to please come up with a different way to excuse them, maybe just roll the dice and accept the fact that they shouldn't do this. Just please consider those and communicate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Mr. Eric Oberson, and then Louisa Hewitt, please.
There's no timer.
He's coming.
This will be short, though.
There you go.
Okay, my name is Eric Oberson. I'm at 3880 Flowering Stream Way in Oviedo. My daughter goes to Laughton Child's Middle School. I was here last week to talk about the grading policy, and so I expressed my concerns among other people also. I'm very pleased that you guys heard and were already reacting to that before we were here, but it's, it's nice to know that, that you do listen and try to make changes. So thank you for that. I did tell you that I would come back after looking at the new proposed A through F, and I was pleased to see the 0 to 100 come back in also. When I did look at the A through F, did the simulation on that, it did, it did show no negative impact to the A and B students, which is good, and it gives you the benefit on the lower end. So thank you for doing that. The only other thing I wanted to leave you with is that you could probably still benefit if you use the A through F to explain to people how that ends up being averaged. And I, I think a, a simple example could help with that. There's assumptions that I had to make, and I'm sure they're right, but, but that would be useful when you roll it out. So, so that's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Louisa Hewitt, and then Karina and Brian Dur, please.
Do you want both people to come up at the same time?
And that's what they wrote it on. They wrote it on that.
Good evening. My name is Louisa Hewitt. I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Like that? Oh, okay. My name, okay. My name is Louisa Hewitt. I'm a resident of Seminole County and an ESOL teacher for Seminole County. My husband has been a teacher in Oviedo High School since 1989. All of our children have attended Seminole County Public Schools, and now we're proud to have two grandchildren in our schools. So we are very invested in this county. Thank you, Dr. Griffin and the board, for giving me this chance to speak. It's the first time I do this. I do have some concerns that are impacting many of our students all over the county. And that is what I want to discuss with you. I'd like to address how the appraisal process can unintentionally sabotage teachers' effectiveness with their students. I started in education in September of 2012 as an ESOL parapro and, and on an annual contract. It has been a dream of mine to teach, after spending 20 years in human resources management. The following year, I became an ESOL's teacher. And since last year, 2014-15, I started working 50% at two schools, Parton and Evans Elementary. The concern I have is one that all resource teachers have been facing and would appreciate some clarification with the county. It relates to Marzano Indicator, and it deals with providing clear learning goals and scales, rubrics. In the past, we have asked for direction from the district for clarification, and we've been encouraged to use best practices and share with one another, and referred us back to our principals. Different schools seem to have different practices at times. This was the first year I was given feedback at one of my schools, and it was the first time I was observed while doing push-in, being a support facilitator. This means that I go into the classroom and act as a support facilitator with my L's during instructional time. Now, this is where it starts to get a little absurd, in my opinion. We had been advised that we need to meet with the teachers beforehand weekly and review lesson plans and have our learning goals and scales for each grade and each lesson. This is not as simple as it sounds. Resource teachers, not just ESOL, VE, ESC, et cetera, are at the mercy at the, when we walk into the classroom. Teachers understandably cannot perform on a fixed schedule every day. Teachers reteach and review as necessary to make sure the students are engaged in processing what they have learned. In addition, resource teachers do not have the extra planning time to meet with all their partner teachers in K to five. And even if we did, we all have different planning times. My concern is that this requirement has become a serious, unrealistic, and unfair burden placed on resource teachers. I propose that we use a more broad rubric that we can use with our K to five students and use, and piggybank off what the teacher has posted in the classroom as a learning goal.
Ms. Hewitt, thank you so much. Your time is up. May I ask, Minnie Cardona and Mark Russi, could you perhaps meet with Ms. Hewitt at conclusion? And we really want to address some of your concerns.
Thank you.
If you could. Thank you for sharing this evening and for teaching. Karianna and Brian Dur, I guess you're coming up together. I love your special treats that you're bringing with you, too.
Hi.
You're getting so big.
Can you say hi, Ryan? Hi, I'm Karina. This is my husband, Brian, and these are our kids, Riley and Kayden. And we're both S E A members, as well as Seminole, sorry, I'm used to talking to four, five-year-olds, not you guys. I teach kindergarten at Goldsboro Elementary, and he's been at Pinecrest. We've both been in the county. We've both been teaching for over 10 years, but I've been in the county for six, and this is his 11th year in the county. And we're here today just to kind of express our, our feelings on the increase of the insurance and how it's affecting us as a family, which is hence the family. For us, it's been really difficult because the cost of living is increasing, and it feels like we're lagging behind in pay when we do our budget together. And when my husband and I sit down to discuss our budget, we live by Dave Ramsey, and we've always, we've always lived by Dave Ramsey and follow with the envelope system. But we find it difficult on top of our bills to save. And like, when unexpected problems pop up, like our AC is molding and needs to be fixed, we don't have the extra expenses to pay for that. And currently, the insurance has gone up where we had to make a decision.
I don't think you're right. Just a couple of things. We, we, we do feel like with a lot of the people in county, we're extremely blessed. I know you guys do a lot and make budget cuts as, as much as you can, and, you know, have, have the teachers' best intentions in mind, and are always looking out for us. So we really, really appreciate that. My parents were both teachers, so I grew up in a family. They're both retired in Seminole, or sorry, St. John's, St. John's County. And so I know that the teaching lifestyle as a family of four, growing up, and what the expenses are and things like that. So we just, you know, we're really looking out for the kids, first of all. I know there's a lot of other teachers in that same boat. So between, oh, here you go. So we know what it's like experiencing that. And we just wanted to kind of express, not just from us, but other early teachers and, and teachers with families as well, kind of how hard it can be and just, you know, we, we do appreciate it, but it's, it has been hard. You know, saving, and then all of a sudden, boom, stuff comes up, and it's, you know, you have a savings, it gets depleted. So just anything.
And with the, the cost of the kids' insurance, to add our kids to our insurance has been difficult as well, because we had to decide, he's going to take that increase where we have to pay 25 a check, which is 50 a paycheck. And then our kids, if we add them on, it's $800 a month, just to add our kids on to our insurance, which is completely not affordable as to teachers. And so we have to look for alternative insurances, which is really difficult. But we're not the, the other teachers at my school and other teachers in other schools that we've talked to. They wish they could be here, too, but they have second jobs. My husband works three jobs just to provide for us. So we just wanted to express our concerns about student insurance. I, I get emotional, he doesn't. That's why he's up here helping me, but.
Thank you so much for teaching, and thank you so much for sharing your concerns.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it. And Judy, Judy Nein, from Lake Howl High School.
You did well. It's Ning. My name is Judy Ning, and I work at Lake Howl High School. I too am concerned with healthcare, healthcare costs to the employees. This jump to 25 a paycheck took me, you know, took me by surprise. Well, and one of the reasons is because this is my second year in Seminole County. I'm happy to be here because I spent 16 years in Volusia County. However, we started in 1997, taking $5 per paycheck out for healthcare. It's now $12. After that many years, it's $12. So I was shocked to find out that this was jumping to 25 a paycheck. And I also wanted to, I have, I'm going to write this down here. There's a teacher, one of my colleagues, she's been teaching for six years, and she has a young child, and she's a single mom. And with all the many, many things that we have to do as teachers, and all the many, many things that she has to do as a new mom, she failed to do one of the incentives. She's now paying $70 a paycheck. And that doesn't have anything to do with her child. Her child's on Medicaid. So she is, she's devastated by this, and she's locked into it. So, you know, she can't even go outside and, and try to get, you know, the affordable healthcare or anything else. So my suggestion is, could there possibly be some sort of appeals process for these people, that their cases could be looked at case by case? You know, I just think that, that, that might be something to think about, because we want our teachers to succeed. We don't want them quitting. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Dr. Griffin, moving on to student discipline hearing dispositions, please.
Actually, I, I have two quick questions before we move on.
I'm sorry, we did that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Vice Chairman.
In talking about the school calendar, there are just a couple of things that I, I want to ask for some clarification on. One of the recommendations was that we could move the start of school to August 9th. Is that something that we could do?
No, by law, the first, earliest date to start is August 10th.
Okay. And then, this is the first I've ever heard that anyone has been asked to present any type of paperwork to prove their religious affiliation. Is that a policy? Is that a practice? Is, where is that coming from? I've not ever heard of that.
That might be an individual school decision. I already made a note, I'll agenda that at cabinet tomorrow. Just a note from a parent is, is suffices.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for that clarification. Moving on to unfinished business. Dr. Griffin?
There's no unfinished or new business, but I do have a few items from a superintendent's report.
Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence. I'd like Mr. Lawrence to come up and just speak to us a few minutes about his thoughts about how we're going to communicate to our community over the changes in school grade, school grading, and the, and the changes in the algorithm.
Thank you, Superintendent, School Board members. Per our last meeting, for the special, special meeting that we had last week, we had a little discussion about a communication plan for how we will anticipate what we think will happen, depending on how school grades shake out this year. So some of the ideas that we've come up with, with my team, is to do a shortened video, very brief, two to three minutes tops, that'll very, very much clarify the basics of what we know now, as it stands now. Because obviously, we, we don't have a crystal ball to predict what the future's going to predict or unfold. And based off the timing of the various meetings, and we know there's a meeting coming up December 4th, and then another meeting in January 6th. So depending on the timeline of which we wish to get something out, we want to kind of stick with the basics of what we know. And that's basically to explain the formula and basic And that's basically to explain the formula in basic layman's terms of what the calculation to calculate a school grade was all these years past to what it's going to be now. So basically showing what that formula was and then yanking out all the things that aren't included in it anymore. So basically focusing on the things that we know factual as of now, with the understanding that we're going to continue to monitor that process and that it could be changing, and that we'll do a follow-up, likely another video, once we know for sure what those things actually are going to be. So really, the timeline is going to be kind of critical on kind of what we're thinking of what we want to get out there and when. A couple of ways that we'll do that, once we have that video, obviously, that'll be a YouTube link. That YouTube link will be shared with all of you and, and, you know, the rest of our constituency and to getting that link out and promoting it. We'll put it on their homepage, we'll put it on our social media, we'll ask our executive directors to share that with all the principals who put on their webpages and social media and make sure that's monitored and gets out. But to make sure and ensure that we get it out to everybody, we'll do a center voice blast, similar to what we did with the "Thank of That" video, to where we'll do a short, brief message referring folks to an email that they'll receive where we'll encourage them to see that video link, to make sure that we're getting out that word and clarifying what's kind of going on as we know it at that point. So we'll share it out that way as well. We'll get it to our PTA groups and all your constituency groups as well. But that will, that way we'll ensure that we're getting the information out to everybody and, of course, hopefully, they'll see it. Only a couple of concerns evolve around the timeline. Obviously, we have the December 4th date coming up, so if we wait after that date to compile what we want it to say, and I'll be working with testing and accountability on that component, that might give us a little bit more clarity if we wait until after the 4th. But then, thinking that we're coming up to our holiday break after the 21st, honestly speaking, after the 21st, most folks are focused on the holidays, so I don't know how much they'll be paying attention. So if we can get something out after the 4th, but a little bit before that break, that would be a good timing, unless we decide that we want to get something out after the holiday break in January, if we have more clarity, depending on what occurs at that January 6th meeting. So that's something, the timeline, we can adjust. Our team will be ready, we can get with testing and accountability, we can put something together very quickly. It's just to discuss what timeline you, Superintendent, and the board wish to get something out, to get that clarity out there as we know it today, because we understand that things could change, and we don't know what that's going to be yet. But just to educate parents on what we potentially want them to look out for and what we expect we'll see.
Great. Board member, any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And then, moving on to board member comments. Vice Chairman Lockhart.
Actually, I, was part of your report having, dealing with the vaccinations?
The flu mist, the revised dates are in, are in there.
Oh, okay, you weren't going to actually talk, talk about that?
No.
Okay, so I am.
Sure.
I wanted to just bring to everybody's attention on the board, I know, you know, we discussed this back in March, I think, was when we actually approved that flu mist partnership. And we've had quite a few emails with some community members, and Dr. Walsh has done a wonderful job of getting, doing all of the research that everyone has asked for. I'm a little concerned, given an email that a physician was forwarded to us by a physician nearby, that the perspective, and this is my perception, let me start by saying that, this is my perception, is that we have, our team has sort of already identified what their position is on this issue, and that anyone who disagrees with them must be uneducated. And the tone of this doctor's email, I think, was unprofessional in questioning some of his colleagues. You know, obviously, they, his exact words were, unfortunately, they are confused and have little understanding of the live attenuated influenza vaccine. And because of their poor understanding, they fear it and blah, blah, blah. And, and it goes on. And I think you all received a copy of that email. If not, I'll make sure that it gets forwarded to you. But that, that was forwarded to us by our staff as, this is why we are going to go ahead with the live vaccine administration, because this particular physician says that it's great, and any other doctor you might talk to who disagrees with them, well, you know, he's just uneducated. And, and I find that position to be unnerving for a couple of reasons. One is, as an educational institution, we have to allow for disagreements. Certainly, those who have the same letters behind their names, who are professionals in their field, they have to be allowed to disagree with one another and not have their professionalism questioned. So I'm concerned about taking advice from someone with that type of mentality. But I also think it's important that we realize that, that this isn't just about our students, this is also about our teachers. We have quite a few teachers who, when you look at the list of the medications, no names are attached, but you just see the medications that our folks are on through the pharmacy program. Many of these medications are being taken by, by our employees. Immunosuppressive medications like Remicade, Humira, Simzia, immunomodulators like 6MP and Methotrexate. And the reason I know so much about this is because I have a child who is on one of these medications. And so I'm particularly sensitive to those who have compromised immune systems. And when, when another physician, not from the local group, but from another very respected organization, Cedar Sinai, a physician with Cedar Sinai, who I think we would all agree is a very reputable medical group, says specifically, furthermore, after noting those specific drugs, furthermore, those who are close in contact with these individuals should also not receive the intranasal spray. These patients could receive the flu shot, the inactivated vaccine, but the intranasal vaccine has live virus in it, and that can be dangerous for people with diminished immune systems. When you have one professional giving an opinion that's contradictory to another professional's opinion, and yet our folks are just looking at the one opinion that supports their position, that concerns me. So I'd ask that in the future, when our, when our team gets comment or questions from the community, that they, rather than being met with an attitude of, well, you just don't know, that there be some understanding that there are people in our community who disagree, there are professionals who disagree, and, and we do have students and, and members of our faculty and staff who, in some professional's opinion, will be compromised by administering the live flu vaccine. So I just wanted to get that on the record, for the record, for any further discussion down the road.
Any other comments on that? Thank you for sharing, and I think that's important for us, for if this ever comes before us in the future, for further action, that we do the research for both sides.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Vice Chairman Lockhart?
No.
Okay. Member Almond?
The ladies that came tonight from St. Mary Magdalene, I attended a meeting last month with them, and they wanted to be sure that we gave a shout-out for our school resource officers and deputies, most especially at Lake Brantley High School. Many of these women have grandchildren in the schools, and they really appreciate the good job they do, keeping our students and our teachers and faculty safe. So I promised I would do that. And then Stan Palmer, who was up earlier, I think it was last month that we had a, a big STEM event at Avito High School, and it was really, really cool. And I understand that he led that whole effort, so kudos to Stan for doing that. And then today was just a wonderful day with teach-in. I spent some time at Cassbury Elementary and read with some kindergarten classes and then made Play-Doh with some first-grade classes, so I enjoyed that very much. That's my report.
Thank you. Member Schaffner?
We've had a lot going on since we last met. First thing I wanted to talk about was the Veterans Day, because we had so many programs going on. I think every one of our schools had something going on, but I went to Heathrow Elementary School, and it was such an awesome program. They had over 40 veterans who were in attendance. They were asked to stand when they were singing the song from their particular branch of the service, and they stand with such pride, many of them in uniform. Some of them, I noticed the buttons were kind of pulling at the stomach, but that's okay. But it was, it was an awesome program. It really, what a tribute to our, our veterans. There wasn't anybody sitting in that audience that, who would have had any idea that these kids would not learn something about veterans just being there that day. They talked about it, they sang about it, they had red, white, and blue flags, they were, they were waving. It was, it was a very, very impressive program. Then I also went to Lyman, several of us were at Lyman High School, and that was a very moving program. Out in the courtyard, they had their cadets, they have a very strong ROTC program at Lyman, and the cadets were all in formation. But something I had never seen before was a tribute to the fallen, and they had, it was about eight students from the ROTC, had on dark clothes, helmets, had their head down, and to amazing grace, they walked across the courtyard very, very slowly as a tribute to the fallen. I just, I thought it was an awesome tribute. And I, again, I don't, I talked to some students today from Lyman and said, were you there? And they said, oh, yeah, that was pretty awesome. I'd never seen it done before, I was impressed. It was also at Wykiva Elementary, they did their Veterans Day program, again, a great tribute. The veterans are asked to stand as they're singing the song of their particular branch of the military, and it's with great pride that they all do so, and everybody claps for them. So great Veterans Day programs we had all over the county. I was at Sanford Middle for their STEM night that they had. They had some pretty neat things that were going on, but one of the things you could make, and I did it, a scab, if you wanted to make a scab, but it was to show you the different, different things that happened to you when a scab is formed. Some of the kids got a little carried away with the scabs that they had, but that was all right. Friday night, there was all-county honor choir for middle and high school. It was absolutely a packed house. Matter of fact, they had to ask the high school students to go outside. There were so many inside, it became a fire hazard. So the high school students went out while the middle school performed, and then vice versa. So next year, we've got to have a much bigger venue for them. Last Tuesday night, national merit scholars, 44 national merit scholarship from eight of our comprehensive high schools. That is an awesome. You walk out of there thinking, oh, my gosh, I haven't accomplished a thing. These students are 17, 18-years-old, they're graduating with a 48, 49 GPA, 16 AP classes. I mean, I don't know how they do it. And then they work, and they, they're involved in the band and drama and so many other things. Very, very impressive. And you'd say to them, so where are you planning on going to college? MIT. Just like, where else would you go? I mean, it's like.
University of Florida, just saying.
Yeah, University of Florida is actually their backup, unfortunately, I have to agree with you. The Internship Expo, Jason, awesome job. That was a wonderful program. Students all dressed up, hat, with shirt and tie on, girls dressed as well, talking to businesses who are looking to hire them, or they volunteer as interns. We had, how many businesses there, Jason?
Sixty.
What did you say?
Sixty.
Sixty. And over 200 students who interviewed, several of them coming out with a big grin on their face, both the businesses and the students, because they had done a match and they were excited about what they're going to be doing. And I'm not going to talk about everything here, but I did want to mention, because I happened to be the one that was there, the Environmental Studies had their 5K, 5K run two Saturdays ago, and had over 400 students, 400 runners and walkers who were there, and I think raised some, considerable money. That was actually on Halloween Day, and they had a good time with that. So I, that's all I'm going to talk about, because I know others want to talk about it, too.
Thank you, Ms. Schaffner. Mr. Bauer?
No comments.
I have a few, other than ditto's for what was already said. I had the opportunity to attend a meeting in Sanford with my brother's keepers, and this is an organization that are trying to come out and mentor our young youth and hopefully partner with us to create a brighter future for all students in our community. So I'm hopeful to grow that relationship with them and our school district. And again, wanted to congratulate Dr. Weisong and your team on that internship expo. I think it's really great for us to expose our businesses to the quality of students that we have and the quality of teachers that we have, because the media doesn't always cover those stories. But when you can actually have them meet these phenomenal educators and students firsthand, I think that's how you turn the tide of public opinion about the great works that we're doing within the school district. Wanted to thank Lowe's, who has partnered with Journeys Academy. They gave them a very huge grant to allow our students to actually re-landscape the entire campus there, working with their managers and their employees. And heard that the students loved it, they're really hands-on learners, and they like to get down and dirty and creative, and to give them pride in their work, I think, is very important to allow those students at Journeys. And the arts are alive in Seminole County public schools, right, Ms. Schaffner?
You bet. Saturday night especially.
Well, this, this last weekend alone, we had the opportunity to showcase the great artwork of our students, thanks to the great leadership of our art teachers at the Heathrow Arts Festival, and also a great day in the country. And wanted to additionally thank the Avito Women's Club, because all of the proceeds from that weekend event, they reinvest back into the community, the majority of it, into our schools, whether it's being to support robotics clubs or scholarships. We met three students who got college scholarships that day, thanks to their generosity, so I wanted to say thank you for that.
And Maitland Art Festival was also this past weekend.
That was my, next on my list.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Our poor art teachers were running hither, there, because we have so much great student artwork to display, display. I needed to really thank Mary Lane for her coordination, and then all of our art teachers running around with that artwork.
She was running ragged this weekend.
And thank you to our FIT department for the FIT Magical Connections and all of the partners that were there, affording our FIT families a lot of opportunities to network with nonprofit organizations in the community. I know we were there with the nonprofit to allow our students to be able to join sports teams. Danny was there, and, and it was just great to see how many people care. Even our young people, there was one table from a student who, all year long, he collects books and games so he can give them out to the students on that day, and he had just such pride to be able to do that. Today, I know we participated in teach-in, and I guess, since I know there's a lot of teachers in the audience, I have to give you an extra shout-out today, because after spending the day with 350 kindergarteners, I'm exhausted. So God bless you for what you do day in and day out. And the last, I'd like to say, from the arts standpoint also, is we had all-county orchestra out at Lake Howl High School on Saturday evening, and you would have thought you were at Dr. Phillips Performing Arts Center or even Carnegie Hall. I was very proud of the students, the teachers that were there, and just the organization for them to learn such complicated music pieces in just one short day to produce a phenomenal concert. I know the families that were there were very appreciative as well. So I'm proud of the opportunities that we afford our students, whether it be with the academics, or the arts, or the athletics, and the wraparound services that our social workers provide as well. So that's the end of my comments, and.
I have one thing I want to add, because Ms. Almond and I were this morning at the Take Stock in Children Change a Life Breakfast, and that's a wonderful program. But they had three different students speak about the impact this program has had, and these are students that we identify in eighth grade, and a mentor stays with them throughout their high school years, but if they graduate on time, if they stay out of trouble in school, keep their grades up, there's a two-plus-two scholarship waiting for them when they graduate from high school. And the main part of that is there's a mentor that goes with it, that walks them through their high school years. And three different students spoke about the impact of Take Stock in Children on their lives, and it was very, very impressive. Can you think?
And along with that, they all expressed their goals in life, and they were quite lofty. They were going after masters and doctorate and wanted to be engineers. One wanted to travel. I was curious how they were going to pay for that, but that was their goal. But it was impressive to see these kids.
That's coincidental.
Yeah, coincidental, sure.
It's a great program, and I'm so glad our foundation and so many community partners partner with that, and especially the mentors, because they give the most valuable asset they have, their time. So it's a great program, and I'm glad we're one of the many counties in the state that support it. So that being said, seeing no further business to come before this board, this meeting stands adjourned. So we can run to the ladies' room if need be. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the November 14th.
Okay, I'd like to call to order the November 17th, 2015 reorganization meeting of the school board. Let the record reflect that Mr. Jeff Bauer, Mrs. Karen Almond, Mrs. DeeDee Schaffner, Mrs. Amy Lockhart and Dr. Tina Calderon are all present. Also present, school board attorneys, Sarita Beeman and clerk, Joe Maramus. The floor is now open for nominations for chairman. Seconds are not needed, you may self-nominate.
I'd like to nominate Tina Calderon for chairman.
Thank you.
Well, you don't need a second, but I'd like to second it.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing no additional nominations, the floor is now closed for nominations for chairman. Dr. Tina Calderon was nominated for chairman. All those in favor of Dr. Calderon as chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed by saying no. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
The floor is now open for nominations for vice chairman.
I'd like to.
The seconds are not needed, you may self-nominate.
I'd like to nominate Amy Lockhart.
Second.
Are there any additional nominations? Hearing no additional nominations, the floor is closed for nominations for vice chairman. Amy Lockhart was nominated for vice chairman. All those in favor of Amy Lockhart as vice chairman, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying no. Congratulations, Dr. Calderon and Mrs. Lockhart.
May I comment?
Thank you, Dr. Griffin.
I'd like to thank you both for taking the leadership role again for the coming year. I feel it's really critically important, especially with all the school grades and information. You've formed some great relationships and you've done a really good job publicly representing us. So thank you.
Thank you very much and for your confidence because we are a team. We don't speak individually, but I do hope that we are getting some good positive feedback and traction from a northern county in the state because we all focus on what's right for children and teachers. So thank you. At this point in time, I'd like to move over to new business. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, the first of three. Is that the school board of Seminole County appoint myself, Dr. Walt Griffin, as board secretary, Joe Maramus as board agency clerk, Grace Gonzalez as deputy clerk and Sarita Beeman as board parliamentary in for 2015-16.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin?
The school board of Seminole County approve the board calendars for 2015-16.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin?
That the school board of Seminole County reaffirm its code of boardmanship, resolution 1997-10.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. At this point in time, I'd like to conclude our reorganization meeting. I'd like to call to order the reorganization meeting for the Seminole County Board Leasing Corporation. Have you all had the opportunity to read the minutes that were distributed to you earlier? Are there any objections to the minutes? Seeing none, I would at this time entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second? And a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Dr. Griffin?
That the Seminole School Board Leasing Corporation established the newly elected school board chairman and vice chairman as the leasing corporation president and vice president respectively. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. At this point in time, I'd like to close our Seminole County School Board Leasing Corporation meeting for November 17th, 2015. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.